We're gonna postpone the poll hearing, or we'll open it, but then we'll put it on hold and we'll clean up a couple of things till Jeff gets here.
Sounds good.
He should be part of that, so. Anytime, Mrs. Gleason? What's the date?
February 4.
Thank you. What's the year?
2019.
That's when we start to have to have some different discussions.
Good point. So where am I? That's really the problem. Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of Monday, February 4th. My name is Jim Lehan. To my left is my associate, Mr. Calcutt. To my left is Nancy, and I'm gonna, Nancy, I hope I don't do this incorrectly, but Langloy?
Langloy.
Langloy. I was gonna put a French accent, but we'll let that go, thank you. Mr. Palumbo is a little tied up in traffic and will be with us shortly. But we welcome you all to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen. I want to remind everybody that this meeting is both being audio and videotaped in accordance with mass open meeting laws. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a public hearing on a manhole and conduit, a mandal and conduit hearing on Lawrence Street Bridge. I would like to make the following motion. In accordance with Chapter 166, Section 22 of the Massachusetts General Law, the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on a petition from N-Star Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy to grant permission to construct and a location for such a line of conduits and manholes with the necessary wires and cables therein. Said conduits and manholes to be located substantially as shown on the plan made by a demendectus, I hope, dated August 27, 2018, and filed herewith under the following public way or ways as requested in the petition. It is on the Lawrence Street Bridge activity, westerly thence turning southwesterly approximately 180 feet west of Park Street, a distance of 1,097-plus feet of conduit at P-25/3. Install four manholes, number 30554, 30553, 30552, and 30551. And with the permission of Chris, if you would allow us, I would just like to defer getting into that until my fellow selectman gets here, which should be within the next five to 10 minutes. Is that agreeable? All right, thank you very much. So in the meantime, if, while we just take about five minutes till Jeff gets here, maybe we can get rid of a couple of these other items that I don't think will be controversial.
Makes sense.
Under action items, we'll defer the first one. Jeff should be here for that. I think the second one is non-controversial. May I have a motion to appoint Ingrid Allardy as to the Town Administrator Search Committee?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Please consider allowing Recreation Sandwich Board in front of Town Hall from March 20 through April 3, 2019, to advertise data registrations.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Please consider appointing Linda Hennessy, Mary Nohibian, and Karen Edwards to the Council on Aging Board.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And thank you, folks, for volunteering to do that. I guess we can do, please consider allowing the annual book and bake sale, which will be held at the DPW beginning April 17 through Saturday, April 20, 2019.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The rest, I really think Jeff should be here for. We don't have any warrants to approve. No minutes to approve. Went through that too quickly. What about the complete streets policy? I don't think that's, you had a chance to read it?
Yep.
I've had a chance, so I don't think there's an issue there. All right, do I have a motion to consider the complete streets policy?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rich, thank you for that, by the way. I think we're gonna have to get into the poll hearing. I apologize for that. Hopefully, he will get here quite shortly, so. Chris, please come and join us. Thank you for getting through that with me.
Yeah, absolutely. That was easy.
Welcome.
Thank you. Christine Cosby, EverSource Energy, and we are requesting, requesting permission for ground location for approximately 1,097 feet of conduit at pole 25 over 3 at Lawrence Street. And also the installation of four new manholes, 30554, 30553, 30552, and 30551. And the purpose of this would be to relocate the existing overhead facilities underground due to the construction of the bridge.
Okay. Well, I think we're both pretty familiar with it. Sir, you were here. You have some questions. Please.
So Mark Polly, I live at 14 Lawrence Street. So that's in between Cranberry Meadow and where the, where the existing bridge project's going on. So I guess you can answer my first question in terms of, I thought the intent was to obviously put this underground. Our electricity runs from, like, down by the pond or across from 17 Lawrence Street to our home? So I didn't know what was being considered to either put ours underground or if those poles were staying.
Where, I'm sorry, what was your address?
Is 14 Lawrence Street, so it's the one house that's shown on that figure. Sheet two of two.
Actually, that is supposedly gonna be, well, telephone's supposed to install a hole on the opposite side of the street for the service to number 14.
Yep.
For the dead end pole. I believe it's an overhead service that they're going with.
Okay, so the electric, though, you just said was going underground, is that correct?
No, the under, the, the portion that's going underground is what's in the, in the bridge itself.
Okay.
Pond, what's in the manholes.
Got it.
Of the primary. And the, we, it would be an overhead service from that pole.
Okay, so basically, nothing's changing, is that, okay, got it.
Other than the location of the pole, it's gonna be on the opposite side of the street.
Got it, okay. And then I see, the other question I had was, I see that the conduit is running up to the intersection with Cranberry Meadow, and I was just more interested in, like, the logistics and timing of things in terms of being able to get out of our driveway when that construction's going on.
That, we will probably have to talk to DPW with in town. It's because the, actually, the town is gonna be doing the work under EverSource instructions and inspections. So that will have to all be worked out, you know, before, you know, hand.
Yeah, okay, I guess the scenario I was just trying to avoid is getting out in the morning and, you know, not being stuck, so, yeah, that's fine.
Reasonable request.
Yeah.
We'll be sure to add it to our weekly project meetings that we have with them.
Okay.
And be sure we cover it to ensure that we keep you abreast of what's going on.
Sounds good. Just one other topic, somewhat unrelated to the conduits, but just the parking of cars on Lawrence Street as it relates to the bridge project. So they're kind of stacking up the cars, like, in front of our driveway, and it's kind of causing some issues with service vehicles being able to get in to our house. The oil man was able to get in, but we, you know, we've had some tree service done, and they brought in a crane, and it was, you know, everyone had to kind of move their cars. And I think, you know, it got us really thinking about, like, what happens if there was a fire, right? Like, could we actually get a truck in there?
What was the number again of the house, sir?
14 Lawrence, so it's, it's again, like, the one driveway in between Cranberry Meadow and the construction site, so it logically seems like it would be a good place for it in the park, given that there's no traffic coming down Lawrence Street, but the reality of it is, it's, you know, maybe causing us a little bit of grief, but not, you know, it's, it's not the end of the world, but I think there might be considerations for alternative parking.
Even if we set it like 100 feet back from where they are right now and started a little bit more towards that intersection instead of being right in front of your house.
Sure, yeah, I don't know if you're just gonna create the same concern for other people. I know it's like one more driveway further down. If you're saying to just park further up the driveway? I don't know, like, the one consideration that we had is, like, could they actually park in the, the site where they're doing the staging for it?
Want to talk a glob on that?
Yep, will do.
We'll, we'll talk with the DPW director and see if we can fix it for you.
Cool.
We don't want to create any inconveniences.
Yeah, no worries. That sounds good. That was all I had. Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks for joining us.
Absolutely.
Any other questions from anyone? Kevin?
Nothing from me.
Nothing from me. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Oh, come on, Jeff. Well, let's see. Do you mind just hanging in here for a couple of, he said he'd be here by 7:15. I'm gonna hold him to it, but. Chief, do you have a PowerPoint tonight, or are you?
No.
No, okay. Rich, yes?
I could add a couple things on the complete streets while you're.
Sure. That would be good. Thank you. We were hoping you'd pitch in.
Good evening, Richard McCarthy, Norfolk Town Planner. I received the draft prioritization plan today from Howard Stein Hudson's for the Complete Streets program, as well as the Complete Streets criteria. And what we had said at the December meeting, that we would get, get that out to the folks that came to the meeting, as well as posting it on the website. So I like to do that for tomorrow, and get the word out for people to be able to comment on it, as well as, I'll be sending out to the fire, police, DPW, et cetera, for their comments. And Howard Stein Hudson's looking for responses back by February 15 from us, which is kind of quick, but.
Is that enough time, Rich?
It's a little tight, so I'm gonna see if I can get us a little bit extra time.
We have a planning board meeting on the 12th, right?
Yeah.
So that fits in, that's one, but I'm sure there's a lot of other moving pieces there that need to be accommodated for.
But it's a little, I mean, that's next Friday.
Right.
So that's a little tight. So I'm gonna see if I can get at least another week or so. So I'm gonna contact them tomorrow, and then I'll put that in the notice to, up on the website for people to know. But I just wanted to let, let the board know and the public, because they were anxiously waiting the information, so it did come tonight, so we can get that out to folks.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Mr. Bullock, come on up. Hopefully, he'll arrive. Welcome, Bob. Mr. Bullock is.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Bullock is here, is throwing on there, hopefully he'll get here. This is an eye test, Bob. Thank you for these fancy glasses, Nancy, by the way. I'm styling here tonight.
They're not taped together, are they?
It wouldn't matter. I forgot mine, so thank you. Bob, take us through your budget, sir.
Well, for the most part, not a whole lot is changing from last year. The, everybody's pretty much on their step increases. The, we have, you know, we have 60 hours basically of admin positions here that we're gonna be maintaining. This year's been a little rough with some health issues that went on, and so it's, you know, hopefully, we've hired someone that's gonna be starting on the 11th now.
Welcome, Jeff.
Hey, Jeff.
He just started.
Sorry for the inconvenience.
Nope, not at all. He just, we're, Mr. Bullock is just starting to go through his budget. Timing is perfect.
Thanks, Jeff. You may need your glasses for this.
Binoculars. You need binoculars for this.
Unfortunately, I forgot my glasses on my desk, but basically, on this, I give you the actual of the past years, the actual numbers that came in, and then the, this year's budget that we're working under right now. You're, you can see that the level service and the level funded budgets are there for the 2019 fiscal year and fiscal year 2020, so I was just saying that we haven't, as far as the employees, you're getting the step increases, and then the, and we're maintaining basically 60 hours in our admin that we have. One of the, our admin had a baby this year and decided to stay home with the baby, so we've hired a new admin, which will be starting next week. So we'll get back to a full staff and get caught up on some of the things that we've been lacking in, so the, other than that, you know, our numbers, you know, that we've actually projected out have been coming in pretty close to the actuals. We haven't been able to fill our mechanical inspector position yet. Still working on that. It's just a tough criteria the state puts on having a mechanical inspector, which makes it difficult. They have to be a building inspector to be a mechanical inspector, and yet to have that knowledge in mechanical, it's hard to find that, that person, so. But our hope is that, you know, we are gonna find somebody at some point along the way here this year, so. So that is still in the budget. As far as the, our expensive budgets, you know, we've put in there. This year, the, the state is going to a 10th edition on the building code, which is gonna necessitate us buying new books, as well as classes on it, and you know, our challenge, I guess, is these 40B projects that have been coming in and keeping up to them, so. All right, we did start a new software program this past year, and we're, we're actually moving along pretty well with it. They made some really, some nice corrections to it this past week that is really gonna help us a lot. Before, people would register, contractors would register, and they would have to put all their information into that registration, and then they would have to duplicate that when they actually pulled the permits, which now, all that information, we've gotten them to actually move that forward into each application without the applicant having to redo those, that information again, so. That's gonna make it a lot, much easier for these guys when they go to, and women, to pull these permits, so. So those are the things that are going on in the Building Department. You know, if you have any specific, specific questions, I'd love to answer them.
Since you just mentioned it, just a question regarding the application process for the permits?
Yep.
Because you had reviewed that with the board some time ago, the new system, the electronic system. So there's compatibility with other software, vis a vis the registrations and such, or is it all part of that same system?
It's all part of the same system. They have to register. Once they're registered, then this, this software actually gives them the ability to pull the permits and actually review all the permits that they have themselves online and be able to see where they all stand, you know, in the process as we review them, as well as when we do the inspections and be able to see all that. The system also, every time we put in our inspections, it sends that information to the applicant, exactly what happened, whether it passed or failed, the reasons it may not have passed. So they have it right in an email that same day, so. And then we have a record of all those things to be able to, this, the software really creates a history of every project that goes on, so we know exactly when we get a, an email, you know, or a change in the application to when an inspection was done, and just about anything that's gone on, it's, we have a nice history to it, so, which was lacking in the other software, so.
Very good.
Kevin, any questions?
No questions from my end.
No questions from my end. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much.
Nice budget.
Yeah, thank you.
2.8%?
Yep.
Well done.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
Welcome, chief.
Sir, I sit down and certainly want to congratulate the New York Patriots for their stellar win last night. It was truly an entertaining game. I think it's one that.
Coming from the chief, this means.
He's trying to soften us up, that's what this is about.
But I, I would, I would conclude by saying that two of your Super Bowl losses did come at the hands of, of the New York Giants, but, but who's counting?
I don't remember.
Because our, our season actually ended before it started, so that's. This season ended in 1960, 2016. No, no, no.
Well, I want to thank you for not coming in a Yankee shirt tonight, chief. We're appreciative of that, although Kevin would have been thrilled.
Not everybody does appreciate it.
Well, would have been a one-to-one until Jeff got here, so.
The season's not off yet, I mean, we're, we're still terribly optimistic wearing pinstripes. You never know what's gonna happen.
You should be optimistic. You've got a good team.
I think we're playing for second place against the Red Sox. I thought Yankee fans were eternal optimists.
Not before they present their budget.
See? There's a smart guy right there. That's a smart guy. I didn't know, I didn't know I was that transparent. So anyway.
Well, Peter's here to help you, so we're all set, right?
Well, he's, he's here to bail me out, you know that. This is a quick overview. A lot of changes going on. We've lost Kevin Brady and Gus Greaves, two residents of Norfolk who are moving on to other, other departments. Their hit to us is a little, little significant from the standpoint that they, they both live here in Norfolk. So we're not only losing career positions, but we're also losing people who are available for recall. These were true top-ranked people. I, I think Kevin, I think we'll see Kevin at some point being a fire officer in, in Hingham, and certainly Gus Greaves has all the tools and the potential to move up the ladder in Foxborough as well. Very, very fine individuals and be very difficult to fill. So what are we doing? We've, we've gone out and we've brought in two people. And bringing in two people in Norfolk is, is quite a difficult process, because it, we look for the culture and the dynamic of how they'll fit with the group. We brought in Alexa Bethany from Millis. She'll have her medic in September at the latest. And we also brought in Matt Pierce, who lives in Foxborough, who is serving as a provisional career firefighter in Plainville. A lot of fire experience, but he will be re-entering his medic program, and that's probably gonna be at least a minimum of 18 months. So as we move the pieces around on, on our staffing chessboard, that, that will become a difficult task as, as we move forward. One of the things that we are going to pursue is gonna be called the paramedic basic waiver through the Office of Emergency Medical Services. We've operated since 2005. For every ALS call, advanced life support call that we respond to, to medics, the regulation changed a couple of years ago, and you can, with the approval of your medical doctor, medical director, achieve the delivery of ALS services, provided that at least two medics show up at the call, triage the call, and they can downgrade as long as is the patient is not subject to or potentially subject to deteriorating conditions, use one paramedic. So that will be one way that we'll, we'll try to address it. The burden that comes into hand as, as we replace staff goes, in fact, with what we do with losing them in terms for the three months when they attend the Fire Academy. That, that's one of our biggest hits. The other thing that we, that we have, this, this looking globally, and I've had these conversations with, with Jim, sidebar, but we put together a program here that was based upon a building block approach. And we based that program from the standpoint of what the budgets could bear. And it started out with, with adding two, two medics. We waited a year in, in 2006, added the next two medics. We waited a long time, and we added the 13th, and last year, the 14th position, so we're covering the days. One of the things that we look at is, when you look at Millis, Midway, and Medfield, they woke up one morning and they had paramedics, so it, it's kind of a, a difficult component that, that we look at. And as Jim and I had the conversation, we're, we're not competing. We, we are unable, obviously, to compete with the other communities, but we're, we're looking, and, and one of the asks that I have, aside from the budget tonight, is that we explore alternatives collectively for how to bolster the, the overall staffing for the department, or what else can be done. The call firefighter route, we've, we've pretty much abandoned. We, we've gone to a program called assimilation, where we bring in at least one or two new members a year. We train them in a paradigm shift. Instead of training them as firefighters, we, we actually train them as being able to drive and operate the, the apparatus first, as long as they obviously have their, their EMT, and we foster them onto getting their, their medic. But as these people come through, that, come through our, our program, you know, they are coveted by other towns, and our ability to, to keep them as call, you know, is a difficult, difficult proposition. One of the things that I've had a discussion with. One of the things that I've had a discussion with Jim a couple of months ago was the Safer Grant through the federal government, which provides funding for additional staffing. Foxborough's been successful, Midway was successful in, in attaining that. And those grants run for three years. The first two years, the federal government basically pays 75% of the salary. The third year, the town, the federal government pays 35%, and on the fourth year, the town can make a decision whether to continue the positions or to drop the positions. In, in the old days, under the Safer Program, local communities were required to hold the position for one year after the grant expired. So, that's something that, you know, that, that we, we hope to look at down, down the road. The X-factor coming forward is we're now in day four of the adoption of the Occupational Safety and Health Administration regulations, as they apply to firefighters and the Commonwealth, or Scott's not here, he could talk about workplace safety. The impact for us is when we arrive at a building fire, we are, under the regulations, prohibited from entering the building if the atmosphere is considered inherently deadly to life and health, IDLH, or if the fire is beyond an incipient stage. Four people can include an incident commander, such as myself or Pete, and then the three people on the shift, four people on the shift, but we, you need to do that. That comes into play only if someone should get hurt. If nobody gets hurt, it's no harm, no, no foul. The other only accept, the only other exception to, to that rule is the ability, if there's known to be someone in the home, potential someone in the home, then you're allowed to advance a charged hose line into the building to extinguish the fire as you go to try to rescue or determine someone's not in there. So, those are some of the background issues that, that are in play right now for the department. Where, as, as always, I mean, we, I've said for 15 years coming here, we adapt and overcome. We've been successful to this date. We, we hope to remain successful moving forward, but I, but I think that the one ask going away from here is for the board to potentially consider, you know, looking at. I, I've written reports for, for years. Some have funny stick figures, some actually have information that doesn't make sense, as, as I've been told, and, and some of it actually looks pretty good. But those reports were based upon my perception, my interpretation, and, and my view of, of the statistics, as it were, and, and maybe we benefit from trying to allocate some money to looking at perhaps an outside entity to come in and take a look, but that's, that's down the road. So, thank you very much for letting me do that as, as the pitch coming in. Our budget, and I had this discussion with Jim last week, we're starting off a baseline of, of 1,801,995 for fiscal nine, 19, and that was based upon the fact of transfers that occurred at, at town meeting. And if we just slide right along to the, and, and skip the cliff, handle the Cliff Notes version, the budget submitted here for this evening is one point, is 1,848,245, which is 2.5% increase, 46,250. And, and that's what the end game is. The, some of the things that the moving parts have happened, with, with Kevin leaving, Alexa Bethany coming on board, there's savings in, in that category in salary. Matt Pierce, when we technically put him on during, or, or prior to the, we looked to prior, hire him prior to January 1st, that didn't really pan out as, as, as time went on, but there's a $12,000 increase for a full year for that position, as opposed to, we were staffing this right now for half a year, for the last few months going down until, until June. The, one of the things that, that I really needed to point out in here is we have a line item in here called supplemental coverage. It was a line item that entered the budget after we convinced the board about six years ago that every time the ambulance transports, we bring back people to cover the station. I can tell you unequivocally, had the, had the board at that time not provided that funding, I, I would be hard pressed to say that, that we'd be able to provide coverage. The, the number of times where we have nobody in the station or only one person in the station during that whole period of time dropped dramat, dramatically, and, you know, it, it's, it's a huge part of, of our, of our operation moving forward. Everything else pretty much rides the same in there. One of the other things I'll, I'll just point out, we're, we're in the middle, we're just initiating negotiations with, with 4134. The numbers that you see reflected here right now in, in the salary side are 4% increase, and that was put in solely as a placeholder. I, I know that in meeting with Todd, at the last meeting, last board meeting, he had had placeholder put as three, but I just wanted to point out that there, there'll, there'll be a difference in, in terms of the figures that we are submitting here this evening, as opposed to what you saw from, from Todd last week. And our expenses and supplies, some of the changes that have taken place there is, in terms of our equipment and repair, our, our gas meters, which we're, we're fortunate enough to secure funding for several years ago, we're getting to the point where we need to start replacing sensors, very expensive proposition, so there's a $1,500 increase in that line. Our radio maintenance, it, it goes up about, it's gone up $500. And when we get into talking about capital, one of the items that we've mentioned in there is that we probably have reached a point where we need to start replacing some of our radios. One of the things that we, we've done over the years is when new equipment comes in, particularly the ambulances, we change those every, every eight years. We generally have not been changing radios. We've been moving the radios along as, as a means to save money, to, to be fiscally responsible, but we've get to the point now where radios are, are becoming an issue. Our training, we had a $7,000 transfer at the Fall Town Meeting. That money was all earmarked for active shooter training in conjunction with the Police Department, also acquisition for protective gear for, for the firefighters, and, and also working with the Department of Fire Service coming in to do training. Uniforms added, go up simply because of the new people coming on board. Protective clothing, we had a fall, we had a transfer at the Fall Town Meeting again for some protective clothing, so that we did, we did reduce that somewhat. And the ambulance lease equipment, that original line was 16,032. We've now completed all of our leasing on our LifePak 15s, of which are heart monitors, Lucas press, the devices that are used when we're administering CPR, and the stretchers and the stretcher lifts that within the ambulances. So, that's Cliff Notes version, quick overview. Where, where we, where we be? I'm happy to entertain questions. If they are of, of a financial nature and technical, I have my sidekick, Deputy Chief Petrichik, with me, and he would be glad to participate in any discussion.
Questions, Shalman?
Just a question, you mentioned the radios.
Yes.
We talked with Chief Stone, some discussion about radios with digital and such, and some decisions about radios and medicals versus wearables and such.
Yeah, police, police have made a decision to go digital. We're not doing it, the Fire Service as a whole, our, our mutual aid partners are all holding fast. There, there are no anticipation of change in that area, so we'll, we'll stay in the analog version rather than going digital. The digital equipment is exceedingly expensive, and for interoperability, it probably wouldn't help us, it would really, really hurt us at this point. And going into the MECC, the Metacoma Emergency Communications Center, as I said, all fire departments are staying uniform.
Kevin?
My questions were along the same lines, just if we saw that becoming a potential issue, not necessarily this year, but three or four years down the road.
You know, who's, who's to say at that point? You know, it's, it's really, I mean, we, we're pretty much committed. We have Jamie Masterson, he handles our radios. You know, he's confident, and he's spoken with the people handling, handling the radios for the other fire departments, so.
Jamie's very capable. He used to be our IT tech guy, and he's really, really quite, quite capable in that.
He, he tells everything.
Chief, I'm going to give you a commercial, because you and I have grown up with this for the last 15 years, and you have taught me about the fire department.
Well, you, you, you know, with the exception of putting fires out and rendering first aid, you could probably run the place.
Oh, I don't know.
You mean he couldn't put a fire out?
No, no, what he means is I can drive the ambulance maybe and hopefully not wreck it. But, yeah, until someone really gets in and understands what goes on, on a day-to-day operation and really gets to know it, it is a very complicated business to understand. And you have taken at least, you know, and, and I'm sure you will with future boards and future folks, take the time to help them learn, because it is not as it's perceived. And of course, Norfolk County has particular rules that make it even more difficult for us. So, I, I compliment you on your flexibility, but I want to take advantage of you while you're here, that you didn't know about this, but I think you could help us with this discussion. I wanted to share this with my counterparts tonight.
Oh, okay. Yeah, movement, yep.
Yeah, I think it's a good thing to, that you're here. I was going to go over this later, but-
Before you get to it, I, I take my hat off to Matt. I mean, good grief, there's, there's not a lot that he's not involved with in town, and, you know, to pull this together as quickly as he did and to, to start and, and at least initiate a kickoff for this, I mean, hats off, Matt.
Yeah. This, this, I attended the first meeting. I was not able to attend this one, but I'm not sure I could have contributed to a darn thing other than to listen. But this relocation of the, and Cole, you jump in, but this relocation of the Police Department and, of course, the Regional Dispatch creates a whole new series of issues along with the dark station consideration and a constant police presence in the center of town, which was our plan from day one. So, there will be what's known as a dark station location, and because Regional Dispatch is going live April 1st, there needs to be some things done immediately, like within 30 days, if I'm right, Cole.
Yes.
That will make sure that we have the appropriate connectivity to this station when Regional Dispatch goes in order. This is, this came out of a, a very detailed work session. While I think it's somewhat self-explanatory, why don't you just walk it through us, walk us through this, Cole, if you don't mind?
So, police move out probably the-
Or for my counterparts, because I had a chance to sit through it, they have not.
The end of March. Once, once police move, dispatch will, will probably face the same time schedule, so we'll be there, but then the ability for people coming down the street, what, what will they do? What will they encounter? How will they, how will they obtain services? We'll be putting equipment into the vestibule at 117 Main Street to ensure that anyone who stops will have immediate ability to, and enter a safe, a seemingly safe area, and, and also be able to communicate directly with the Regional Dispatch Center, and appropriate resources will be dispatched out to them. One of the things that goes hand in hand with this i- is that, from our perspective, we, we handle a tremendous amount of, of walk-in trade for medicals. I, I hate to say that we, we get, we get the cardiac problems coming out of Franklin that want to go to Norwood and don't make it, they end up on our doorstep. And the acuity of the patients that we see coming in there is probably three to one for ALS versus BLS. We, we don't get the, I stubbed my toe, and could you get me an ice pack? We get, I can't breathe, I'm having allergic reaction, my heart's racing. We, we get the, the urgent type of calls, so that aspect of, of station coverage will be provided. One of the things that's in play i- is whether we renovate or whether we, we build new, we have to end up somewhere. And Jim has, has worked with Matt, with, with Bob McGee, and, and in the meeting, I tip my hat to Bob as well, because he's, he's being a true team player. I mean, basically, what we're going to end up doing is moving all of his rolling stock out, out of the garage and replacing with fire apparatus. Our, our trailer will more than likely move up there, the, the dormitory trailer, and we'll probably add a second trailer that would be used for administration in, in offices. Certainly, moving into residential areas is not the, the best option for where to go, but it is the only option, so we're, we're working with the, the best of the worst, and this is really where we have to, there, there really are no other places that, that can house us unless we want to pay significant dollars. Once we move up there, we'll need connectivity to, to the, to the internet, we'll, we'll need all of our HVAC utilities taken care of. There's, there's been some very good conversation on that, on how that would be accomplished. So, from the DPW vacating, there's also a detailed plan of, of things that would need to be done to modify some of their equipment in terms of ensuring it doesn't freeze in this weather, because one of the things that, that Bob pointed out is, is that, you know, being able to get their equipment out on a timely basis. He's confident that, he always calls people in early for snowstorms, and by doing so, you know, the equipment should be ready to go, but he, he also has some plans as well. So, like I said, the, the information is, is really, is really thought out. You know, the funding, that goes in Jim's lap, he takes care of all that for us. And critical equipment that we have to take with us are, are really five pieces. It's our, our gear extractor, which is a, a large commercial washing machine designed specially to remove toxins from firefighting equipment, our dryer, once you take your gear out of the extractor, you put it in the dryer, and you can wear it, our SCBA, our self-contained breathing apparatus compressor for our breathing air, the gear racks that we have all of our gear stored on, we modify those wheels. Right now, they're fixed to the wall, we'll modify those wheels. And then the, the emergency medical services, where all our medical equipment, we need a secure area to, to store that. Some of the sidebar issues would be the radio box system that we have for the town, where we monitor fire alarms. We also monitor panic alarms from the three schools, and we also monitor the external electronic defibrillators, the AEDs in the schools, so that, God forbid, there's a emergency at the school, they hit a panic button, it comes up special on our radio box system so that the dispatch procedures can be followed from police and fire. So, the radio box system will be moved from the station at 117 Main Street, and will go up to the Weber tank. We have a, a building up there that we graciously share with the Water Department, and that equipment will, will be taken care of, and we'll be able to operate. The only thing we need to do is to ensure that we have a, a generator, at, at least to service, if nothing else, the IT server room here at the town hall, and, and that's being explored. So, again, that's just a, a rough overview on the planning that's, that's going into this right now.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. I wanted to, I wanted to take advantage of you while you were here. And more, we'll, we'll keep everybody informed on this, but this whole project is, is an incredibly complex project, more than I think we understood when we got into this, mostly because of Regional Dispatch being connected to that police station. But there is a lot to think through, and we've got some great parties here working very hard. This is by no means the first meeting, we've had four or five of these already, trying to think through all of the potential issues associated with this. It's doable, we can make it work, and everybody is playing very nicely in the sandbox, everybody is really working to find good solutions to this at the lowest possible cost. So, my compliments to everybody on this, but I wanted to take advantage of you while you were here.
Um.
Questions, anybody? Jeff?
In terms of the incremental costs associated with the moving and any of these temporary facilities?
We, we have, we have a ballpark number, Jeff, not an exact number, which we would build into the cost of the project, but I, I don't want to give you a, a guesstimate yet, but I would say by the March meeting, I'll have a firm number for you.
I'm logistics.
Okay. And that would be basically incorporated into-
Not into his budget, no. No, 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 it's in the Public Safety Building budget. Yeah.
Some sad news. This is the final budget that I'll be preparing and delivering here in, in Norfolk. At this time, I want to pass along to Jim and the members of the board, my plans to retire as the Norfolk Fire Chief effective June 30th of this year. Not getting into the, the particulars. It's my situation, and, and that-
What else, chief?
We'll talk another time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything, chief.
Where are we?
Term town administrator.
Rich, welcome. We, uh, we need you for a couple of things up here tonight, don't we? Shall we hit the professional engineering services?
Yeah, I think that would be a good place to start.
Yeah, I think that would be a good place to start. We actually did, Jeff, we did cover Complete Streets before your arrival.
I read your, yeah, your draft, it's very comprehensive.
So, we'll touch on the engineering study. So, the proposal that's before you, prepared by Environmental Partners, is, it's part of the phase to evaluate the town drainage system to be able to handle the increased impervious coming from, that would be when the development tool on Main Street gets done, to make sure there's adequacy in that system itself. Last year, around this time, we became, we got housing certifications through Mass Department of Housing, Community Development. And one of the, at that time, I submitted a grant request to actually do this work. Unfortunately, we weren't funded from our application. But, so, as time went along, the development of 201 Main Street is much more imminent. So, we need to move forward to have the evaluation done. Just to check the hydrology of the system and make sure it can handle that. If not, what kind of adjustments would need to be made to the stormwater system itself? That proposal, so this is what this proposal entails. It's the price, at least as you saw the bottom line.
Forty thousand, six fifty.
Yes, that's, that's not something for which I have in a budget in my department. So, I will need town funding to be able to fund that study.
Well, I'm the one that has the history on this. This goes back to 2004. My first thirty days on the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen entered into an agreement with the owner of that property in exchange for some good pro pose, if you will, to give him the right to hook into that drainage. That agreement was signed by the Board of Selectmen, and in my view, the town has a legal obligation to fulfill that contract, period. So, I, we'll have to fund this through free cash, but you gentlemen will have to join me in this, but I will certainly vote to expend those funds because we entered into a binding agreement. Whether that board thought it through and understood all the repercussions and the various issues associated with the ZBA as well as the conservation is not the fault of the owner of that property. That is the fault of the town. And so, I would encourage you to support this. Any questions? We need, the Cliff Note version of this is that there were restrictions on the pieces of property that could get into the town drainage system. This piece of property was not one of them that was so listed. For whatever reason, when this agreement was developed, it precedes my time. It was done, I think, originally started around 2002, if I remember. And the only thing I know is that a contract was brought to us to sign my first three weeks on the board, and both board members agreed that that was the deal. They're both gone now, I'm the last hanging on. But, to me, that's irrelevant. A deal's a deal. So, the only way we can do this, because we don't have any authority to in any way circumvent these rulings by ZBA and conservation, nor should we. We need to find out if the system can, in fact, we think it can. Bob McGee has taken a quick, you know, has taken a fairly detailed look at this, but we need to know it formally. We can't just make the assumption, and this is the only way we can do it, so. Your questions, sir?
Yeah, I've been into stormwater-related activity in town center through some of the planning board activity in the past. So, some of this was familiar to me and some of it not. As Jim said, this came before the Board of Selectmen, before I was a member. But this is very well-written. I think Environmental Partners does a pretty good job in terms of, you know, outlining the scope of work and such. So, I think I thoroughly understand it, having read that. The question I have is, you know, have we gotten a second quote? I mean, it is a fairly significant amount of money.
No, we, we haven't, but I certainly can, you know, take what's in here, the kind of the scope of the work, and get quotes on it, so.
Yeah, I mean, so it has my full support, and hopefully, it won't delay the process too much to just get some additional-
Actually, it won't. What I would do is, with your blessing, I would then, you know, kind of turn this into a proposal, a request for a proposal, and I'll get out quotations from it. And then, you know, the money would be coming through town meetings, so you're really not, you know, the money wouldn't be available to, after town meeting takes a vote on it.
Correct, it won't be available till the 14th.
So, so there's ample time to get this out and get quotes back, so that's not, that wouldn't be an issue, to be able to do that. And then, and then obviously, once the quotes come back, look at the qualifications and then make a selection and then be obviously subject, couldn't enter a contract without the funding, but at least we can line things up ahead of time.
Good, very good.
Would the board entertain a motion to approve undertaking the engineering services subject to a formal proposal from the planner, town planner? Something to that effect. If you want to frame it differently or phrase it differently, feel free.
It's pretty good, I thought, yeah.
I would like the board to, you know, hopefully, we can all agree that we need to do this. So, if someone can be creative to frame a motion to support going forward with this subject to final approval of a bid process, I would appreciate that.
So, move.
Is that an acceptable motion?
Support to going forward.
Voting support for going forward with the engineering services subject to approval of a formal bid. Is that close enough?
Good.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Rich, I know you've worked hard on this, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Rich.
That we need to bring this to conclusion as quickly as we can.
I think that's, for me, this evening.
Let's see, we did the Complete Street.
Question on Complete Street, you wrote me back on the sidewalks.
I did, yeah.
How'd you look out on that in terms of using CPC?
Well, so CPC, they don't meet till Wednesday.
Yeah, but not in terms of a town specific decision, just in terms of the commonwealth, in terms of-
Yeah, so I did, one of the questions was, was utilization of community preservation funds for sidewalks. And I went on the Community Preservation Coalition website, and they do have a list of towns. I was aware of it anyway, but, but just to validate that communities are using CPC funds to build sidewalks to connect, you know, whether, you know, it's recreation property, maybe it's a historic site, but anything that's connected to, you know, the act, so to speak.
Good, that could be helpful for us.
Yeah, absolutely, it could be helpful. So, I was hopefully gonna have, be able to pop in on CPC Wednesday night, but the ZBA's got a pretty full boat, so, same night, so. If I can't, I mentioned to the chairperson that I would try to do that, but I don't know, we'll have to see. But if I can't Wednesday night, then I'll pop into another meeting just to have a kind of follow-up discussion about that. Because they were gonna have a discussion Wednesday about the potential trail for the-
Down at Pondville.
Yeah, down at Pondville, so.
Right.
I was particularly interested in that myself, just as a planning aspect, but, so. So, yeah, that is good news, though, so.
Thank you, Rich.
Richie, I guess, we did the, I forgot to check it off, we've done the Complete Streets, so I guess you're off the hook, huh?
Yeah, I did, I did touch on those points, we'll get that, we'll get the plan up, the criteria, I'll send it out to people for review. I will speak to the consultant before I put it up on the web tomorrow, just to kind of give us a little bit extra time. They were looking for comments back by, Jeff, by February 15th, which is actually next Friday, which is, I know it's fast. That's fast for government, I would say. I mean, not that we don't want to be slow, but, you know, people get time to digest it, so.
Sure.
I'm gonna try to give us a little bit of extra time, but, but we'll set that up for folks.
Well done.
Thank you very much, Rich.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, next action item. Do you have, do you want to read the surge DPW service awards, Kevin, as our clerk?
As soon as I-
I don't think you have them.
This is the long list, isn't it?
We have them here. Oh, you have them, okay.
Oh, that's why I- Don't usually take turns with this one, Jim, everybody reads it.
I'm when there's a new guy, apparently.
Well, we didn't make copies of all of them, so we just have-
It's been an interesting year.
Do you want me to divvy them up, or do you want me to read them?
Oh, no, it's okay, I can do it.
Oh, there's a lot of them here.
Yeah, there are a lot.
Let me see if they're stapled appropriately, because, yeah, each one should be in a packet.
Well, while you're thumbing through those, I'll just take one. One of the items for discussion this evening is to consider appointing an interim town administrator. Jeff, when you weren't here last week, Kevin and I agreed that the time has come. The schedule, we have people at home, I think everyone knows, we've reopened the search. That search is now back out on looking for candidates. I understand that there are some new candidates that have surfaced, according to Bernie. That he will be accepting applications through February 22nd. I would imagine that he will review them and then bring some recommendations forward to the screening committee. The process has been set. We voted Ingrid, by the way, onto the board before you got here, so she will be on that board as well. So, I would anticipate that we would probably be receiving recommendations from the selection committee around mid-March, would be my guess. So, we'll see how that goes. So, if you play this out, we'll be really looking at, if everything goes well, and it hasn't yet, so I don't know why I would expect that it would, but we might have someone on board by, hopefully, just before town meeting. Hopefully. Certainly would be nice. But what that means is that if someone is on board, they will certainly not be in a position to contribute on the budget and other considerations. And while I think we've all tried very hard to fill the gap, I know you've been working hand in hand with Mr. McGee, and obviously, you guys have done well, because I haven't heard a thing from Bob, so you, you guys got something going over there, and that's, that's a good thing. But they need someone here, now that we're deeply into the final stretches of the budget process, because we start meetings with the advisory board in March. So, we're basically in the last three-week hike now to finish this all up. I've been going through every budget with department heads I'm working with, and I've spent a lot of time with Todd. We're in okay shape for this time of year. We're in our usual ballpark of the six to eight hundred thousand dollar gap. We've been conservative on revenues. All the budgets have been pretty good. Did I, I think I sent you guys the KP first run, didn't I?
Yes, I saw the slideshow for that.
They're looking for about a 5.2, that's their first run. It's about normal for them. They've also shown the 3%. You may have seen that, it's a $478,000 differential on the allocations. So, we'll see where it goes. That meeting is taking place tonight. Todd is there, representing us. There's negotiation in there, and they're always conservative on all of their considerations. Transportation number's always low. That's always, that'll end up higher. There are circuit breakers, you know, that's always a year behind, they won't know that number for a while. I think they put 400 E and D in there, which is similar to our free cash. Notice, did you guys notice the change in the formula, our calculations?
No.
They were substantial.
Oh, meaning who bore the brunt of it? Yes, that I noticed.
Yes, yes, it looks like our neighbors who were off the hook last year are on the hook this year. That's good and bad news. That's a mixed blessing, so that's gonna take some negotiations. Painful, I suspect. But the number wasn't outlandish for us, even at the 5.2%. It wasn't a number that was off the charts. So, from a selfish perspective, in Norfolk's side of the coin, I was pleased with our number, but we're gonna hopefully have to get that down closer to 3%, but that is yet to be determined. I know we've got a meeting next week, I've got a meeting with the superintendent and the business manager, I think, on Thursday of next week. This is best done by each town talking individually and then getting together collectively. That's the best way to get this, and that's the way it's worked the last two or three years, I think it's more advantageous that way. It's hard to get three towns with three different agendas and three different considerations in an open meeting guarantee, you know, agreeing to anything, so we kind of work this on our own and then try and find common ground. But the budget's actually not bad for this point in the year. All the department heads have been, I think, very good. And I'm glad that you and Mr. McGee are, DPW's taken the short end of the budget every year for a long time, and I applaud getting some new funds in there. They need it, they really do need it, and they need some capital. We've gotta find ways to fund some capital. We haven't even started the capital, well, we have started. We have the capital plan, and we have the capital list, and we know how much we have in, for capital. We haven't, it'll have to come to us sometime, probably first meeting in March, to prioritize how we want to spend that. Then we'll leave that conversation for March, I guess. So, I agree, Kevin brought it up, and I agree that we need to appoint someone to provide guidance. This isn't, you know, telling everybody what to do kind of situation. It's for two or three months to have someone here that's here on a day-to-day basis that people can go to. And I think the time has come to do that. I think we've done the best we can, but we don't live here. So, what do you gentlemen think? I'm sure we each have maybe a thought on it. Does anyone want to start? I think it's a limited number of candidates.
Right, and, you know, you kind of start with looking at the qualifications that we ask for, for the individual as a baseline starting point, seeing who you have who might fit into that kind of template, or as close to that template as possible. There are, there's a couple of people out there who probably fit that description. Then you look at, from my perspective, who's here already, who's already living the life, and who's been part of this as we've gone through the last couple of months. There is an individual that sticks out to me in particular, one who's kind of taken on additional responsibility in the stead as we've been working through the process, and that's our finance director, Todd Linmark. I think that, given his qualifications, given what he's been doing over the course of the last three months, and given his experience, he definitely is a potential person I think we can look at for an intern.
Well, I agree with everything you said. The bulk of what will go on between now and May revolves around the warrant and finances. That's the bulk of what the work will be, and it is logical that the person that is closest to that would be the person that could provide the best guidance to people in working through those considerations. So, I agree. I think Todd is the logical choice to work us through. Bringing someone from the outside, I'm very much against. We've done that in the schools, and it's just, you're putting a caretaker in there to fill a seat that has no knowledge of the town, no basis for that, and you're paying for something that you get no value for. So, I completely agree, it needs to be somebody inside. And where they're this close and this far deep in the budget cycle, I agree with you. I think he's the logical choice. Jeff?
Yeah, I agree with both of you, maybe particularly with what we have.
You get the easiest out of the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, what we have ahead here the next few months, yeah, he's the right guy.
I agree. So, do I have a motion?
I move to appoint or open discussion with, is it just a point?
This would be an appointment.
Okay.
Yep.
I move to appoint Todd Linmark as the interim town administrator.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I will, I'll catch him first thing in the morning and sit down with him, and you guys feel free independently to do the same. He's usually in around eight, I'll catch him at eight o'clock tomorrow morning and give him the bad news. And just, you know, I would encourage each of you to just have a visit with him at some point, if nothing else, by phone, to give him encouragement and support, if nothing else.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, we've got one other item, please consider a Class II license for Norfolk Exotics. And I've been asked to state that it is the opinion, I believe, of the inspector that this will require filing of an F-11. Change of use, in other words. But our effort this evening is to approve the license. This, there is legislation that has been passed effective January 1st that changes some of the considerations around a Class II license. It was designed to sort of stop the internet sales of cars out of people's homes or what have you. But under the advice of counsel, he believes that that will be challenged, and at this point in time, we should go forward with it as it has been considered in the past, which does not have that same restriction until the law is reaffirmed, so. Counsel has recommended approval of that Class II license. Do I have a motion or conversation?
Where is the location?
It is, the location is at, is it 191? 194.
Main Street.
Familiar spot that we're all familiar with.
Right, okay.
194 Main Street, but the sales will be conducted out of his home. The change in the- The change in the license consideration, as I understand it, is there needs to be an office in the place of that location where the cars are stored, but that is subject to, I think, being reaffirmed. It's going to be challenged, according to town council. So, anyway, we may have to revisit this at some point in the future, but at this point, he recommends approving.
Okay.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the Class II license for Norfolk exotics.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are we ready for surge?
I guess so, I don't have to write too fast, I quite, Kevin, you have all my paperwork.
Well, you've been terrific to join us this evening, and we thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Well, while you're doing that, there were, there was one other item on the agenda, which was a board response to harassing emails. I am removing that item for many discussion this evening, under the recommendation of town council. All further issues and correspondence concerning this will now be handled through town council.
Okay, something just happened with this computer.
We didn't do a surge, right?
No, wait, we're, yeah. You ready to go?
All right, so what am I motioning to approve here?
Here, give me one, and I'll start one. You have two of them here, I believe.
They're all individually.
Yeah, I know they are.
And I can show you where the titles are.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of the best way to approve these.
I'm doing one by one, so it would be pavement reclamation.
Yeah.
And it would be in place hot mix asphalt.
Right, all right, I'll make this motion, and it's, what you're dealing with is what's on the top, right here.
Okay.
We're approving the bid price of liquid asphalt and diesel, and those are numbers. Those are the bid contracts.
Got it. All right, starting at the top.
Almost as bad as the licenses.
I move to approve the reference prices for liquid asphalt at 535 a ton, and for diesel at 2527 a gallon. Should I just go through all of them?
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the reference bid for.
I think they're duplicates.
They are duplicates, it only took me one read to catch it, though.
Not bad, though, not bad.
Yeah, just the top of each.
Yep. I move to approve the pavement reclamation quote for sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy and sixty cents.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I move to accept the in-place hot mix asphalt quote in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the guardrails installation of steel beam quote in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. I'm, I move to approve the polymer-modified crack ceiling quote in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and two cents.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the structure work quote in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One to go.
And I move to approve the sidewalk construction and setting of curbs and edging quote in the amount of five hundred and fifty-four thousand, twenty dollars.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Search contracts for those at home are contracts that are bid with multiple towns, so that we get more favorable rates when we bid as a conglomerate versus individually, so, thank you. We do have an executive session, is there any other catch-up on business that we have? Jeff?
I don't believe so.
Just to remind, I believe March 27th is the open house for the police and regional dispatch center. The police will be moving in, they'll be starting to move in mid-February, another week or two, they'll start moving some stuff, they're working on the electronics as we speak. If you haven't been down, take a tour through, because it's really just a bunch, it's a real finished product almost at this point in time.
It's been a few weeks now since I've been down.
The dispatch will be going, will be doing some trial, beginning March 1st, open house 27th, operational April 1st. So, yeah, which, I still think they should have gone April 2nd, but they'll go on April 1st, April Fool's Day. But it is quite a complex, it really is quite a complex now, so. Everyone is invited to join us that day. So hopefully, folks will get the chance, did I say 10 o'clock in the morning? I hope I did. But it's at 10 o'clock in the morning. They are inviting local dignitaries, I think even the governor's going to be invited. This is the second regional dispatch center opened in the state of Massachusetts, so it's a big deal. Plus, it's got about four and a half to five million dollars worth of state funding in it, close to two and a half million dollars worth of computer equipment, so I think they want to see it, would be my guess.
Yeah.
So it's exciting. That's the only update I had. Kevin?
Nothing for mine.
Okay. We do have an executive session. I will ask, we are going into executive session to subscribe strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, subject to CDR Maguire. CDR Maguire is the former, what I would call clerk of the works on the police station. Do I have a roll call vote to go into executive session?
Jeff Palumbo, aye.
Kevin Calga, aye.
Jim Leehan, aye. We will not be returning to open session, and there will be no votes taken during executive session. Thank you all very much for joining us, and our next meeting is February 18th. Back to the two-day schedule. No, that's Monday. It is a Monday, sorry, we're staying on Mondays in February. So, again, thank you very much, and stay warm, it's a beautiful day, wow.